Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, February 6, 2024. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland, Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross, Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith, Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson, Mr. Lavelle, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Will all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and stand standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next order of business is proclamations. I have one to be presented. If Ms. Angela Mike and all those here for the CTE Month proclamation will please come forward. As all of those come forward, I'll begin reading the proclamation. We have good things happening in PPS, and we always like to highlight the good work that is happening, and we've done this for a number of years now. So, whereas February 1st through 29th, 2024 has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education, whereas profound economic and technological changes in our society are rapidly reflected in the structure and nature of work, thereby placing new and additional responsibilities on our educational system, whereas career and technical education provides Americans with a school-to-careers connection and is the backbone of a strong, well-educated workforce which fosters productivity in business and industry and contributes to America's leadership in the international marketplace, whereas career and technical education gives high school students experience in practical, meaningful applications of skills such as reading, writing, and mathematics, thus improving the quality of their education, motivating potential dropouts, and giving all students leadership opportunities in their fields and their communities. Whereas Pittsburgh Public Schools' career and technical education programs help students to prepare for high-wage, high-skill, high-demand careers in STEM fields, industry apprenticeships, as well as two- or four-year degree programs at Pennsylvania State-funded schools, community colleges, private schools, and trade schools. Whereas Pittsburgh Public Schools in the city of Pittsburgh are partners in providing career exposure initiatives as well as paid cooperative educational opportunities in CTE students. Whereas Pittsburgh Public Schools' career and technical education programs are an integral part of the district's objective to ensure that all students are equipped with the skills to succeed in college, career, and life. Whereas the ever-increasing cooperation between efforts between CTE education, business, and industry leaders and post-secondary education institutions stimulate the growth and vitality of our local economy and that of our entire nation by preparing students for career forecasts to experience the largest and fastest growth in the next decade. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare February to be Career and Technical Education Month in the city of Pittsburgh. May I have a motion?
So move.
No move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proclamation is approved.
Good job, guys.
Angela?
Okay, thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
On behalf of Superintendent Walters and Pittsburgh Public Schools, and of course myself, I'd like to say thank you for this honor. I also want to recognize and thank our Board of Directors. We have our Board of Directors' President for Pittsburgh Public Schools, Ms. Director Jean Walker. We also have in the House Director Ms. Sylvia Wilson. Director Sala Houdin is here. Director Jamie Petrowski is here, and Director Devin Telferero is here with us today. So, thank you all for being here and being so supportive of career and technical education. So, I wanted to first start with that we believe that career and technical education is the best of both worlds, and we say this because our students are not only prepared for post-secondary school, but they're also prepared for a job, or I should say and/or. Most of our students do both. The other thing I want to talk about with career and technical education is that we have a lot of great partners, and one of those partners is here today. That's UPMC. If you all can say hello. I'll talk to you in a minute. So, thank you for being here. And we have our health careers students. We wouldn't be here without our students. I want to recognize them and their teachers that we have here in the room. All three health careers teachers from Westinghouse, Perry, and Carrick are represented and health career students. So, thank you all for being here. We wouldn't be able to provide these supports for you if we didn't have these wonderful students with us. So, thank you. I also want to talk about, in Pittsburgh Public Schools, our goal in career and technical education is that every student leaves with an industry, stackable industry certifications, and they're prepared to go on for life after high school. With UPMC, this partnership is providing jobs at over seventeen dollars an hour to our seniors that are still in high school, standing here. So, they're going to go to work and make money already, jump-starting their careers. They're also into enrollment courses with community college. They're taking medical terminology and other courses. The other thing I want to mention about Pittsburgh Public Schools, under career and tech, are business teachers. For the first time, for every single student at Pittsburgh Public Schools, our Board of Directors made a very important decision to make it a graduation requirement that all students go through personal finance. Very important decision, and that started this school year. So, again, I want to thank you all, City Council, for your support, ongoing support, over the many years. And I also want to say it's opportunities like this that help us get the word out about career and technical education and letting our families and the community know that they can take advantage. And at this time, I'd like to see if our Board President would like to say a couple words.
Good morning, everyone. I want to first thank President Lavelle and City Council for your continued recognition and support of not just Pittsburgh Public Schools, but of our career and technical education. You know, many of you know, the pandemic exposed some deficiencies in our services and ability to provide services for folks, and those in the healthcare field were on the front lines of bringing that through. And so, your recognition and support of this helps us to build the next generation of healthcare professionals, specifically, but also service professionals in all areas of career and tech that are going to lead us into the future. So, from the Board of Directors of Pittsburgh Public Schools, thank you for your support, for your recognition, and thank you to Angela Mike for her leadership, and UPMC for your partnership, and everyone who partners with us. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could, just say a brief thank you. My name is Pam Arroyo. I'm in UPMC's Human Resources Department, and truly, it's just a thank you. Thank you to City Council for helping with the opportunity and showcasing these opportunities. A special thank you to Pittsburgh Public Schools, Angela, the teachers, the students, the board. Opportunity is the key word. We're excited to keep creating those opportunities. As a Pittsburgh Public Schools graduate myself, this is exciting in so many different ways. So, very glad to be here, and thanks again for the partnership.
Students, we're going to let you introduce yourselves. If you want to say anything that you appreciate about your health careers program, feel free to share briefly.
Hi, I'm Manaya Wiggins, and I go to Westinghouse High School. I am in CTE for nursing. And I really like that I know that I can have a future with this program, in that I know that I can build on top of skills that I know I need for the future.
Thank you.
My name's Mahela Cook, and I go to Westinghouse, and I'm in the Health Careers CTE. I'm very appreciative of all the opportunities that this program has given me. It already gave me a job opportunity, and I'm a CNA, so I work at Presbyterian Senior Care. So, I'm just glad that it's given me all the opportunities that it has.
And she's also a fierce competitor. She competes against other students in the state of Pennsylvania in her field, and did a wonderful job. So, I just had to mention that.
We have all members come up for picture. Probably come around this way, probably easier. We'll all squeeze in.
Mr. Walker, sorry. I didn't recognize you.
I'm not blocking anybody. I didn't come over and hug you because I wasn't, you know, we don't usually hug, but I was going to come over and say something. I don't want you to feel slavy.
No, because you're here.
You weren't here.
All right, right here, please. One more.
Always, always.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
She is Texas.
And I didn't realize all the other things that were going on as well, and also. Some could be running together, so it's beating celebrations. Thanks again. Appreciate you. I know you're busy.
All right. So, next, Madam Clerk, I believe we have one to be read into the record from Councilwoman Warwick.
Yes. Councilwoman Warwick presents, be it further resolved that the City of Pittsburgh joins with these local AIDS service organizations to continue to provide proper and appropriate AIDS-related services and programs: Transuniting, Proud Haven, Hugh Lane Wellness Foundation, UPMC Pact Clinic, University of Pittsburgh HIV Clinical Research Study, AIDS Free Pittsburgh, Shepherd Wellness Community, Allies for Health and Wellbeing, Gilead, One Hood Media, Macedonia Family and Community Enrichment Center, and AHN Center for Inclusion Health Positive Health Clinic.
Thank you. Are there any motion to approve?
To move.
Second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Proclamation is approved. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which may be forced City Council and profanity is not permitted. Our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen. After you recall, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Naomi Mullen.
Here. I honor my husband, who is the true City of Pittsburgh servant of the public from the 1970s until 2021. Shady trees, not shady deals, and Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, the purpose of government is for the peace, safety, and happiness of the people they serve. The Bon Air Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Without that, there is no valid governance. Here's the situation. An excellent school was closed. The building has become a threat and detrimental harm. It should be condemned and sold to the city for a dollar. It must be torn down. Parks and trees Pittsburgh funds used to make it into a green space. The residents of Bon Air care for it as volunteers. Why are we paying taxes for continued detriment? Why should we pay taxes for a detriment? The Pittsburgh Public School Board and administration are again looking to close school buildings. Yet they have allowed Bon Air Elementary to sit empty for decades. Thousands of dollars wasted every month, yet they won't cut the taxpayer losses and move on. Does our district's board member not have enough clout? The previous head of business and finance would not allow her to attend meetings about Bon Air School. He ignored her calls and emails. Is this an example of discriminating against a white female? Clearly, financial losses make no difference to those who simply waste our tax dollars, then hike taxes again. Why is there no oversight by the controller? Why is there no pressure or influence to stop this waste, fraud, and abuse? The solicitor obviously does not advise the school board and administration to stop harming the Bon Air community. First, the teachers' union led to charge for residing out of the city so their children could attend better school districts. Then, it was the police who said their children were bullied in city schools. Now the firefighters have fled to areas like Cranberry and Mount Lebanon School District. Way to go, running people out of the city with good income. Thank you, Pittsburgh Public Schools, for showing your incompetence. This was read at my husband's funeral. He lived a full life as his obituary so accurately described. He was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. A first responder Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belsheuver, also Copenhagen, Denmark. What I seek are four world-regional alliance victors. Global Intelligence Society candidate for president 2024. GlobalintelligenceSociety.org. We are after is a maximum information intelligence matrix and a minimum of ideology. A concern of council is the oath of office. Each of you claiming the office of counselor took an oath, a contract, committed you to converse with us about life in the city and in this country. Africa, Hausa. You counselor claimants have a kawantara contract, do have a magana conversation, tare dahmu, on a voting system in which we can verify your vote for whom in council, like Mr. Lavelle for president of council, but in which we cannot verify our votes for whom. No citizen in the Hill can verify that she or he voted for Mr. Lavelle. You break the contract. Asia, Nihongo. You claimants have a kayaku, do have a kawaii, wata shitashi to ishoni, on the local security threats to the United States. From Triad 1, Virology Center RNA Gain-of-Function Ops, Nano Atto Chemical AI Robotics, Cesium-137 and antimatter positron medical applications. Triad 2, the Biosafety Lab 3-4 in Oakland, Supercomputer Center Peta in Oakland, the Cyber Command in Oakland. No information you give, especially Strasburger and Warwick and Lavelle. You break our contract. Latin America, Espanol. You claim to be officers, have a contrato, do have a conversacion con nosotros, on an urban, pre-university school system in our name, the Pittsburgh Public Schools, for which the city pays, over which the city has no formal legal control, which fails as a pattern. Our children, especially children of Black African descent, contradicted a little bit by today's presentation. I appreciate that. But fifty percent, more than fifty percent are at basic in 11th grade, and the overall scores are at 10th place or less in the PISA Math and Language World Comparisons. The intelligence you show on this is at a minimum. You are contract breakers.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mohamed Eslaid. Do not see him online. Is Mohamed Eslaid here? Our next speaker is Cody Smith. Our next speaker is Cody Smith, whom I also do not see online. Our last registered speaker is William Parker.
Hello?
You may, you may begin.
How y'all doing? My name is William Parker. I want to congratulate those students first coming down there and getting recognized. I also want to take this time to let them students know that, you know, let this be a stepping stone as your careers start off. We also need some people to possibly be inspired to join the political field because we have a lot of corruption here in Pittsburgh. We have a lot of corrupted officials. Last time I was down there, it was in August, and I was in front of City Council, and I talked about the $3.5 million ARP funding that was supposed to go to our small businesses. Now I see that that funding has been completely wiped out, and I don't know what's going on with that. But now I see it's been allocated over to the avenues of some community development, and that's questionable. But I want to say that this Mayor Agane's master plan sounds like a master scam. Ain't no $6 million needed to conduct no survey for Pittsburgh. We thinking like more, $200,000 or something. So, don't be voting on that. I encourage council members to not vote on that today. We need more research, and we need more information on that. You know, your job is to make sure that the taxpayer dollars aren't being wasted. So, we need to really expect that, put that under the microscope, and really see what we're going to get out of that, and who's all benefiting from that. You know, I don't even think Agane's going to be the mayor of Pittsburgh in the next couple of years. So, we got to put that on hold, and we can't be just thinking about doing all these favors and showing up. You know, I was very vocal also on that supermarket up there in the Hill District, and you know Lavelle, what me and you went through about that, and it's just now being open. It hasn't even opened yet. So, you know, I'm on top of y'all. I'm watching y'all, and y'all know this. So, let's not just be quick to make any moves. The City Council, look over at City Council members, especially the new ones. Let's do a better job to really look out for the taxpayers here in Pittsburgh. That's it.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak.
My name is Howard Philip Jackson, HB Jackson, BPAP, NAACP. Been with NAACP all my life, growing up in Pittsburgh. Now, the reflection of the history, I'm blessed to see the resurrection of the City Council, because I watched the disgrace of 12 years that transferred Pittsburgh 50 years behind schedule. And I'm going to relate to that to the fact of, like, there was an administration 12 years ago that had a tattoo Reverend for the representation of trust for African-Americans that was so ignorant, and they had a distinct representative that was running for mayor also, that made him like he ate watermelon and his eyes popped out of his head like he was stepping and fetching, or whatever that fellow was. Okay. Now, the ingredients right now, it's a resurrection period. Now, I just heard a discrepancy about our leader now, the mayor, and it's a disappointment. What it is, we have to develop trust in our system, and I'm trusting the council to go ahead and transform the change. What I seen in the 12 years, I watched Allegheny Jail turned into, use your imagination, into reality, and I watched Schuman Senator just got eliminated. And I watched baseball for the summer activities for young people to be busy instead of getting into violence, just discredit. Thirty years ago, they took away baseball, and that's a patient game. That's the mind game. That's a game that, like, really develops character on patients. Now, we know the violence about football, hockey, basketball's been our game, but they took away the heart of baseball. The Home Steer Grays, coffee grill. I mean, look at the Pittsburgh history with baseball, and look at the fundamentals of the responsibility this City Council got to go ahead and support our leader. And he got some great people in front of us. Oh, I'm Glen Hazelwood-bound, by the way, also. I grew up there. It's always been about Hill District and Homewood History. I'm going to let you know something about Hazelwood History. It exists, and it got very special history. Glassstone got Malcolm X history. Board of Education never did a follow-up on that. African-American history. Oh, this is Black History Month? But Black History's every day, and thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Any further speakers? Any further speakers? Seeing none, that will move us on to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Charlotte, Chair of Human Relations, Human Resources, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Sharland presents Bill Number 98, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement or agreements with Optum Connect Your Care for Services relating to the administration of the City of Pittsburgh's Flexible Spending Account Program for some not to exceed $40,500 over three years and for the payment of the cost thereof. Bill 99, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement or agreements with PNA Group for Services relating to the administration of the City of Pittsburgh's Consolidated Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Act, COBRA, Program for some not to exceed $15,000 over one year and for the payment of the cost thereof. Bill 100, Resolution Providing that the City of Pittsburgh enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with consultants and/or service providers for professional services in connection with civil service and MPOETC, Required Assessment and Evaluation of Public Safety Candidates and Providing for the Payment of the Cost Thereof, Cost Not to Exceed $95,000. And Bill Number 101, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement or agreements with Work Partners Life Solutions for Services relating to the administration of the City of Pittsburgh's Employee Assistance Program for some not to exceed $49,500 over one year and for the payment of the cost thereof.
Thank you. To say success to Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation Performance Asset Management and Technology.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 102, Resolution Amending Resolution 898 of 2023, Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into startup participation agreements with selected entities as part of the cohorts of the PGH Lab, and further authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into program participation agreements with local municipal entities to allow such entities to test products and services through PGH Lab at a total cost not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars over one year. The purpose of the amending legislation is to correct the name of one of the cohort companies, and the amending legislation is not adding any additional funds.
Thank you. That takes us to Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs. Oh, I apologize. Councilwoman Gross, you have a waiver on Bill One-O-Two?
Thank you so much. Motion to waive Rule Eight so that the bill may appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda?
There a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will appear on tomorrow's agenda. Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number One-O-Three. Resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right title and interest, if any, in into the publicly owned property in the Fourth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block Twenty-eight P, Lot Three Thirty-three, Thirty-three Nineteen Niagara Street, Council District Number Three, at no cost to the city. Bill One-O-Four. Resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right title and interest, if any, in into the publicly owned property in the Twentieth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block Twenty-eight, Lot One-O-six, Fourteen Sixty-one Charter's Avenue, Council District Number Two, at no cost to the city. Bill Number One-O-Five. Resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right title and interest, if any, in into the publicly owned property in the Twenty-third Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block Twenty-four F, Lot One-O-two, Chestnut Street, Council District Number One, at no cost to the city. Bill Number One-O-Six. Resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right title and interest, if any, in into the following publicly owned properties in the Twelfth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block One Twenty-five B, Lots Two-Eighty-one and Two-Eighty-three, Lincoln Avenue, Council District Number Nine, at no cost to the city. Bill One-O-Seven. Resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right title and interest, if any, in into the publicly owned properties in the Twentieth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block Nineteen C, Lots One-Eighty-four and Two-Thirteen, Block Twenty-L, Lot Two-Fifty, Block Twenty-M, Lots One-Ninety-five, Two-O-three and Two-Twenty-eight, Block Twenty-R, Lot Seventeen, and Block Forty-two P, Lot Seven, Two-eleven and Nine-eleven, Amher Street, Ten Forty-two Lakewood Street, Three-O-four and Three-Twenty Lorenz Avenue, Ten Twenty-one Rue Grandview Street, Ten Twelve Charter's Avenue, Ten Seventeen Feardale Street, Council District Number Two, at no cost to the city. Bill One-O-eight. Resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right title and interest, if any, in into the publicly owned property in the Twenty-fourth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block Forty-seven M, Lot Two-Fourteen, Eighteen Fifteen Rialto Street, Council District Number One, at no cost to the city. And Bill One-O-Nine. Resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right title and interest, if any, in into the publicly owned properties in the Thirteenth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block One Seventy-five B, Lots Fifty-seven, Fifty-eight, Sixty and Sixty-one, Tyoga Street, Council District Number Nine, at no cost to the city. And Bill Number One-Twenty. Resolution amending Resolution Number Forty-two of Two Thousand and Twenty-four, entitled, Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Pittsburgh of Certain Property Having Been Placed for Sale to Adjoning Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Sideyard Program, Items A through N. Twenty-eight Twenty-five Webster Avenue, Twenty-eight Twenty-three Webster Avenue, Fifty-one Sixty-three Hillcrest Street, Four Fifteen North Graham Street, Sixty-five O-six Meadow Street, Seventy Forty-two Kedron Street, Ten Fifty Wheeler Street, Zero Oakwood Street, Zero Oakwood Street, Fifty-eight Seventy-four Douglas Street, Five Sixteen Cedarhurst Street, Three Thousand and Three Zephyr Avenue, Four Nineteen Marshall Avenue, so as to add Item E. Two Twenty-nine Shetland Avenue.
And that takes us to Councilwoman Kail Smith, Chair of Recreation, Youth and Senior Services. Councilwoman Strasburger?
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number One-Ten. Resolution amending Resolution Number Eighty-eight of Two Thousand and Twenty-three, which authorized the mayor and the director of city planning to enter into an amended professional services agreement with Bromberg and Associates LLC for effective communication services for city meetings and events by exercising the contract option to extend the term for one year, adding the city clerk as a signatory and increasing the total spend by one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a new not to exceed amount of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars. Bill One-Eleven. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Spillman Thomason Battle, PLLC, for expert legal services in connection with a litigation matter in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an amount not to exceed ninety-five thousand seven hundred sixty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cent over one year. Bill One-Twelve. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Thompson Reuters West for legal subscription services for an amount not to exceed seven thousand thirty-four dollars and nineteen cent over one year. Bill One-Thirteen. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Kittleson LLC for expert witness services in connection with two matters filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas for an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars and thirty-three cent over one year. Bill One-Forteen. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Crowell Associates, Inc. for expert witness services in connection with the litigation matter in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand eight dollars and thirteen cent over one year. Bill One-Fifteen. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant payable in favor of National League of Cities for one-year membership dues in an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars. Bill One-Sixteen. Resolution authorizing the City of Pittsburgh and the Director of Finance to extend the lease and tower use agreement with Crown Communication LLC at Thirteen Thirty Hassler Street for four additional five-year terms. And Bill One Twenty-three. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II Fiscal, Article Nine, Property Taxes, Chapter Two-Sixty-three, Real Property Tax and Exemptions, Section Two-Sixty-three Point O-two D, Due Dates, so as to amend the discount date for the Two Thousand and Twenty-four fiscal year.
Councilwoman Strasburger?
Um, motion to waive the rules of counsel for Bill One Twenty-three so that it will appear on tomorrow's agenda.
A second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will appear on tomorrow's agenda. Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number One Twenty-one. Resolution further amending Resolution Number Eight Eighty-six of Two Thousand and Twenty-one, effective December Twenty-seventh of Two Thousand and Twenty-one, as amended, entitled, Resolution adopting and approving the Two Thousand and Twenty-two Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Twenty-two Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Twenty-two through Two Thousand and Twenty-seven Capital Improvement Program by removing Poise Foundation as a grant recipient along with people of origin rightfully loved and wanted, poor law, and authorizing a subsequent agreement for a total cost of forty thousand dollars.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number One Twenty-two. Resolution further amending Resolution Number Eight Forty of Two Thousand and Nineteen, effective January First, Two Thousand and Twenty, as amended, entitled, Resolution adopting and approving the Two Thousand and Twenty Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Twenty Community Development Block Grant Program, approving the Two Thousand and Twenty through Two Thousand and Twenty-five Capital Improvement Program to correct the JDE job number for St. Michael's Food Bank.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, I have three appointments.
Council President Lavelle presents Bill Number One Seventeen. Resolution appointing Kyle Webster as a Commissioner on the Commission for Human Relations for a four-year term, which will expire on February Twenty-eighth, Two Thousand and Twenty-eight. Bill One Eighteen. Resolution appointing Mary J. McCullough as a Commissioner on the Commission for Human Relations for a four-year term, which will expire on February Twenty-eighth, Two Thousand and Twenty-eight. And Bill Number One Nineteen. Resolution appointing David Green as Director of the Department of Permits, Licenses and Inspections of the City of Pittsburgh.
And what is council's pleasure? Would you like to make a motion to interview or a motion to approve?
Motion to interview.
There a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We will work with the clerk to get all three interviews scheduled. That moves us to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before council? If not, our next order of business is reports on committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Strasburger, Committee on Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number Ninety-two. Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for January Thirty-first, Two Thousand and Twenty-four with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number Forty-eight. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Jeffrey Curtis and his attorney, Howard F. Murphy Esquire, for a single payment in Two Thousand and Twenty-four in an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand five hundred dollars payable over one year in settlement of a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number Forty-nine. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Judith Kulik and her attorney, Andrew Sissick Esquire, for a single payment in Two Thousand and Twenty-four in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars payable over one year in settlement of a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. And Bill Number Seventy-six. Resolution amending Resolution Number Eight Fifty-seven of Two Thousand and Twenty-three, effective December Twenty-seventh, Two Thousand and Twenty-three, entitled, Resolution adopting and approving the Two Thousand and Twenty-four Capital Budget, the proposed Two Thousand and Twenty-four Community Development Program and the Two Thousand and Twenty-four through Two Thousand and Twenty-nine Capital Improvement Program by increasing Charles Anderson Bridge by twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
You have heard the reading and the titles of the bills. Is there any discussion?
I wasn't done.
Excuse?
I wasn't, I wasn't done.
You pause, I'm sorry.
By twenty-two million nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars to account for additional Federal Highway Administration funding being received at no cost to the City of Pittsburgh.
Now you have heard the reading and the titles of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor will say aye when your name is called. All those opposed will say no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland?
Yes.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bills have received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Warwick on, for the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number Ninety-three. Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for January Thirty-first, Two Thousand and Twenty-four with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number Fifty. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, local share accounts statewide to provide funding for the Smallman Complete Street Project. The grant proposal includes an ask of nine hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirteen cent for this stated purpose. Bill Number Seventy-eight. Resolution amending Resolution Five Twelve of Two Thousand and Twenty-three, which provided for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the Charles Anderson Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed fifty-nine million eight hundred ninety thousand dollars in increase of six million two hundred thousand dollars from the previously executed agreement for costs associated with the construction phase of the project. Due to this phase being one hundred percent federally funded, this resolution serves to authorize only the amended reimbursement agreement or agreement at a cost not to exceed six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements.
You have heard the readings and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bills have received the legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Wilson on the Committee of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number Ninety-four. Reported a Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for January Thirty-first, Two Thousand and Twenty-four with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number Fifty-three. Resolution further amending Resolution Number Eight Forty of Two Thousand and Nineteen, effective January First, Two Thousand and Twenty, as amended, entitled, Resolution adopting and approving the Two Thousand and Twenty Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Twenty Community Development Block Grant Program, approving the Two Thousand and Twenty through Two Thousand and Twenty-five Capital Improvement Program by reducing Pittsburgh Community Services Safety by fifteen thousand dollars and increasing Pittsburgh Community Services Hunger by fifteen thousand dollars and authorize subsequent agreements. Bill Fifty-four. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the City Plan, Director of the Department of City Planning to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contracts with HR and A Advisors in Urban American City for the purpose of assisting in the development of a citywide comprehensive plan cost not to exceed three million two hundred fifty-five thousand dollars over two years. And Bill Number Fifty-five. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of City Planning to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with Common Cause Consulting in Saseki for the purpose of developing a citywide engagement strategy to support the citywide comprehensive plan process cost not to exceed two million six hundred forty-five thousand dollars over two years.
You have heard the readings and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? If not, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland? Mr. Sharland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Uh, no on 54 and 55, and aye on the other two.
Said no on 54?
And 55.
And 55. Ms. Gross?
No on Bill 0054 and Bill 0055, and yes on the other bills.
Mr. Mosley?
Uh, yes on Bills 53 and 54, and abstain on Bill 55.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
No on Bill 54 and on Bill 55, and aye on the other bill.
Mrs. Strausberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. President, or Mr. Lavelle President?
Aye.
Nine ayes on Bills 53. And zero nos. Seven ayes, three nos on Bill 54, and... Eight ayes on Bill 55. Wait, no, sorry. Six ayes on Bill 55, two nos on 55, and one abstention.
I'm, point of order, I'm sorry. Can we clarify that? I, I was under the impression that Councilwoman Kail Smith voted no on both 54 and 55.
She did.
She did.
And so I believe there are three nos.
On 54.
And three nos on 55.
And one abstention on 55.
Okay. But, and also three nos on 54.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, just checking. I didn't, couldn't figure out which bills were which. I apologize. Thank you. But I think it might have said, then, there might have been the wrong number of ayes on one of them. Could you repeat the ayes on Bill 54? Because if there's one abstention, the abstention's on 55. So there's six ayes on 54, and there should be only five ayes on 55. Is that how it was stated?
Five ayes, two nos, one abstention on 55.
I think it was three nos.
Five ayes, three nos, one abstention.
Thank you. Okay, I got that. I got it now. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Uh, the bills having received a legally required numbers of votes are passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, presenting on the Committee of Innovation Performance Asset Management and Technology.
Mr. Pedson, thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 97. Reported a Committee on Innovation Performance Asset Management and Technology for January 31, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 46. Resolution amending Resolution 681 of 2022, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an amended agreement with B3 Solutions, Inc., for the continued provision of software maintenance and support services for critical applications and transition guidance by increasing the approved amount by two hundred thousand dollars and extending the contract for one year until December 31, 2024. The amended total cost not to exceed of the contract will now be two million one hundred twenty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars over a period not to exceed seven years.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Yes.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith? Mrs. Strausberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President?
Aye.
Eight ayes, one no.
Bill having received a legally required numbers of votes is passed finally, and that finally takes us to Councilman Mosley, presenting on the Committee of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 96. Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for January 31, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 47. Excuse me. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for 107 and 109 Natchez Street, Pittsburgh, 15211, at no cost to the city.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All those in favor will vote aye when the clerk calls your name. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith? Mrs. Strausberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nos.
The bill having received a legally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions. Is there anything from members? If not, that takes us to meeting announcements. Council Standing Committee meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday, February 7, at 10:00 a.m. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Speaker registration closes at 9:00 a.m. Next Tuesday, February 13, at 1:30 p.m., council will, council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bill 2089 as it pertains to updating the zoning code standards relating to childcare parking. And next Wednesday, February 14, at 1:30 p.m., council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bill 2327 as relates to the authorization for property owners to operate a major public destination facility, electronic sign, large video display at West General Robinson Street and Mazerosky Way. To register to speak at these hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Speaker registration closes at noon. With that, we need a motion to approve the minutes adjourned meeting.
So moved.
So moved. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.